We'll call this regular session meeting of the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners into session. Today is July 25, 2017, and it is now 5 o'clock. Mr. Clerk, if you'll give us a roll call, we'll get started.
Yocum.
Here.
Wisdom.
Here.
Story.
Here.
Spearman.
Here.
Higseth. Mottlin.
Here.
Keaton. Jackson.
Here.
Hood.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Clispy.
Here.
Franks. Eaton.
Here.
Clifton.
Here.
Browns.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Penfield Ronnie.
Here.
Penfield Delano.
Here.
15 present, 3 F.
We'll now have our invocation by Commissioner Birch Spearman, followed by our pledge by Wayne Yocum.
Father, it's honor and a privilege that we can come before you in this public place and let you know that we really appreciate everything that you do within our lives. Thank you for the blessings you both stow upon us, not only as individuals, but collectively as a group and a family. Father, as we go forth to conduct the business of this county, we ask that you, that your Holy Spirit enter into this room and that it consumes us, that we vote and we make decisions based on your concern and your ability to give us to do that. We thank you and as we go forward, and we ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First on the agenda tonight is public comments, and we have two people signed up, and it's Annie Bradley and John Bradley. If you guys want to come up to the podium, address the board.
So, we're here to speak about the burning situation that we have. I know that I've spoken to several of y'all concerning my son Jaden. Jaden was born with hypoplastic left heart syndrome. Basically, this means that the left side of his heart does not work. This means that, in a given moment, his oxygen could be 50 percent. Now, for all of us, that would kill us. Jaden has been through so much in his life. Right now, we're at Vanderbilt waiting on a heart transplant. Burning would be so detrimental to him. Period. Period. It could hurt him and kill him, and I cannot let that happen. I have to be his advocate, his parent, and the person that has to take up for him. I am begging y'all to do something else. It cannot happen. I don't know what else to say. I know that the financial, I understand all that. I know what it means to Lawrence County, and I don't want anything negative to happen to Lawrence County. My problem is, is my son. My son comes first, and I need y'all to listen and understand that. And please, help me. Help my son. Help my husband. Help my family. And let him be able to live a wonderful life and not have someone dictate when he can go outside. I mean, that's just, I don't understand. I don't. I really don't know what else to say. I, you know, I'm begging and pleading. If it was y'all's kid, you would do the same thing. You would be up here, you would be doing everything that you could to protect your children, and I'm going to do that. And I'm begging Lawrence County to help me do that for my son. Help me, please. Help me protect Jaden and make his life as perfect as it can be. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. John, you want to come address the board?
Well, I think there's three problems that I see here. It's a lack of leadership from the county and certainly a lack of leadership from solid waste. The other two problems is that I think that we're here on, the first being the construction of an open burn pit for the county's wasteland rental drive. The first one that they constructed was approximately four acres big, and the only reason how I found out about it is because I came home one day, it was a Friday, to eat lunch with my son, and I hear machinery there, and I go over there to check it out, and they say, "We've got approval from the state to burn all the county's wood here." And I look across the hollow, and I see my house. My house is 300 yards away. So, I go to making phone calls. I think the first one was maybe my commissioner, he was on the weekend. Second one was to TR, third one to Chris Shafer. I spoke with TR, and he did say that we didn't know that a house was there. Well, I mean, it's, I don't have any confidence in the leadership of the county or that committee that they can make any good decisions out there on where a burn pit can be. I think they put it 300 yards from a person's house, and they said, "Hey, we didn't even know that there was a house there." But the second problem is going to be, it's maybe number five on the agenda, it's where the city of Lawrenceburg is asking the county to give approval for a solid waste part one application. The problem with that is, is that they're not only asking to extend the demo fill, they're asking to extend yard waste. They're wanting to accept yard waste there, which, that right there is the first step in becoming an open burn pit. So, that's why we have to oppose that right there. And I know some of the commissioners here has, they have received misinformation from people that, they say that what's on the agenda tonight doesn't have anything to do with burning. It absolutely does. It's the first step in it. But I guess that's all I have to say right now, and I'll be more than happy to interact with y'all.
Does anybody have any questions for either Ms. Bradley or Ms. Shafer?
Chris, I've got a statement.
Yes, sir.
I lived in an area that was controlled, the area was actually controlled by the National Park Service. But they wanted to close the area because of safety hazards, and there were people living in that area that had moved in from California. They had a lot of pull and a lot of power with it. Governor of the state, and the governor called the park superintendent and told him, and this is what the superintendent told me, he told him. He said, "You go ahead and have your little public hearing, but when it's over, you are not going to close that area." They didn't. My two children and my wife drowned less than a year later. Governments sometimes exceed their authority and don't consider all the consequences I've said about them.
I think there's a little bit of misinformation about what's going on here. Yes, we want to extend the existing demolition site. What is demolition? It's the wood waste we're talking about. So, for us to not burn for years and years and years, we have to have an alternative. That is the alternative. We've got open 38 acres out there for a demolition site, then we don't have to burn it. That's the whole purpose, not to burn more, but to quit burning. We're going to have to burn some to get there, because it takes a long time to get the permit, get the design, get it done. It's not the intent. We were asked to try to find another way, and we have done it. You know, that's the situation. I hate that this is a situation where we've got a year plus that may be involved, but that's what the demolition extra add-on is all about, so we can have, yes.
Mr. Hood, my problem with this is, is my son, if he were to get this heart, okay, anything burning could cause an infection. Anything. That could cause him to be in the hospital for however amount, enough time for that to be out of his system. That means that my son is going to be, we might as well put him in the jail, because that's the way he's going to have to live, and that's not fair for a five-year-old. It's not. You wouldn't ask your five-year-old grandson, or your daughter, or son, or anyone to live that way. I'm not going to let my son live that way. I will not.
We offered monitoring, air monitoring in your yard, and y'all didn't accept that.
So, what would you, I mean, so, we, let's say we do this. That means the two days you give me a call, you say, "Jaden cannot come outside today." I should be okay as a mother with that. Would you be okay? Would you be okay, honestly? Because you would not.
I can't put myself in your place, ma'am.
No, ma'am. No, sir, you can't.
I can't do that.
No one can.
I'm doing, but you act as though nothing is being done, trying to come up with a resolution.
But the resolution is burning.
But we have to burn. It's full out there. We have no place to go with it. We're full.
It could kill my son. It could kill him.
Have we tried to get any grants? I mean, it's a legitimate question.
Do you know how long it takes to get a grant?
Well, did you start?
We've got something, it's a better resolution sitting in front of us right now. This is the best resolution we can come up with.
Well, I mean, if we would have started with the grant process a year ago, we would be a lot closer to it.
A grant for what?
Well, T-DAC, the lady that handles the grants in Nashville, her name is Loretta Harrington.
I've heard.
I have her phone number. And I've actually left her a message for that, but I'll call back. She's the lady that you would request grants from. And the way it's been explained to me at the local T-DAC office in Columbia is typically it's, the county has to meet the state halfway on the funds. But from time to time, the state actually makes exceptions for that, and they'll actually pay 100 percent. It's just, I guess it's how you approach it.
Again, what are you suggesting I get a grant for? An incinerator?
Uh...
I mean, if you know, I've got to tell them what I'm going to do.
I would say, well, have you thought about that?
Thought about a lot of stuff. I know Ms. Harrington, I've been involved with years with this situation. We have an engineer inside. Do you mind talking, Gary?
Sure. I would propose a tub grinder.
A what?
A tub grinder. It's what Sam French had, where they...
Okay. Do you price one of those?
I'd love to. Would they be expensive?
And mine is expensive too, and then you've got the material to get away with. I've ground it up, I store it in a site, it rains on it, it runs off, it's actually worse, you know?
Well, like I said, I was at the T-DAC office in Columbia last Thursday, and I spoke with two or three guys there, I think Caleb and Art, and the grinding and putting that material actually on the old city landfill is actually an excellent idea. Apparently, the state is on board with it.
Well, the state has not said anything to me, because I've called them, so I've not spoken to them. Garland, if you could, I'd like for you to talk about the techniques of this.
Andrew, Mr. Garland, Commissioner Spearman.
Well, I was just fixing to say, Mr. Chairman, we've got a process here to go through. When the resolution comes up, we have an engineer on site that'll answer a lot of these questions. I think a lot of the questions right now will be answered as soon as we hear from this individual, along with the property owners who is the city of Lawrenceburg, and that would be a good time to sit back and let's see what they have to say, and then we can make a decision.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Garland, if you can speak?
I think we got a really big misconception. What this resolution is for is a new expansion of the construction, demolition landfill that's out there. I'm sure most of you guys know that we have, and ladies, that we have a landfill out there. Currently, it's five acres. It's got about 50,000 cubic yards of material left in it, and then it's full. Can't go anything above that. That's just what it is. So, there's 160 acres that the city of Lawrenceburg bought from Murray that they acquired. It's absolutely perfect for a landfill. I've got some figures here that I'd like to pass out, just to kind of help talk through it, if y'all don't mind. And what the resolution here for is, you cannot put a landfill in the state of Tennessee in three counties without getting everybody's approval from county and city that it's involved in, in those three counties, Bledsoe, Lewis, and Lawrence. So, what we're here for is to kind of, in order to push forward with the application and the design, not the approval, just the application and design of the landfill is to, so the county kind of meets about this, and so we can kind of proceed. Now, I understand that, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. So, the city acquired 160 acres to do construction, demolition, and landfill. Right now, like I said, they've got 50 acres left. We've probably got somewhere in the neighborhood of one to one and a half years before we can get a permit if things proceed on a rapid pace. The whole purpose of this, if you get this landfill, we will not be burning. All of the waste that is there can go into this landfill. Problem is, we cannot put all that material that we got stored into the existing landfill. If you look on your figure, you'll see the current Class 3.4 landfill at the bottom right. The two red ones are the cells that are going to be, are the proposed, and that's why we're here. Little blue areas around it are detention ponds. We've kind of gotten further along on that one as far as design. If we were to put all of the material that we have in there, we would be full. And then you would be having to, you wouldn't have any place to put your construction, demolition landfill materials, you have no place to put your brush and all that. But the bottom line is, if you've got an alternative, I know the burn permit is the hot topic right now, but this eliminates burning for 50, 60 years, without a doubt. The bottom landfill itself has 660,000 cubic yards of material that we can put in it. That includes all this brush waste, anything that you were thinking about burning, all of it can go in there. So, it eliminates the burn, so it solves your problems right there. But we've got to get to that point, and that's what Mr. Hood said earlier. We have to get to the point to where we're getting there. So, we don't have much space left in the current one. It's my understanding, I'm not involved with the burn permit, I know something about it, but it's only to kind of buy you a little bit of time until you get there. Now, if there's alternatives, then we can do it. I know you mentioned a tub grinder. Yeah, that's absolutely perfect. We could use it as cover material or anything, but we cannot store anything on this existing material, on this 14 or 16 acres until we get permitted. Can't do anything with it except design on it. The whole purpose that we're here for tonight is so that the county understands that this is the process that we're going to go through to try to get a landfill permitted with the state of Tennessee, so that the community, the entire community, has a place to put construction, demolition, yard waste, any approved waste for the next 50 to 60 years. Any questions?
Is there a time frame we can talk about pieces to do?
So, we are, we had the hydrogeologic stuff done, which kind of told us how deep we can go, so we started doing the design. So, that bottom one that you see right there has been designed. I've got another figure that kind of shows the basis of it. And then, so once that kind of goes in, the state of Tennessee has their own timelines that they review stuff. So, once we have the resolution, they can start looking at the hydro report. They cannot until this resolution here is passed. This resolution also has to go through to the city too for approval. Like I said, all entities involved must approve it. So, once that's done, they look back at it, they do their review, and then it's to construction. The thing that takes the time is, you've got to put the roads in, you've got to put these ponds in, because all the stormwater associated with it has to be captured, be able to be treated before it can discharge down the valleys and stuff like that. That's what takes the time.
In the meantime, we'll have to be storing in this small space that you've got left, what you're using now.
That's absolutely correct.
And that's the reason you want to burn it, because you don't have any place to store it.
That's why the city wants to. But it's, now, and let's go back to the burn permit, just real quick, so I make sure you guys understand. The burn permit is issued not by, it's issued by the Division of Forestry and Agriculture, not by Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation. Now, they have particular things that indicate when you can burn, when you cannot burn, what days of the, you know, of the, what months of the year and stuff. Max is only two to three times a day, or a month, sorry. So, I'm sure that coordination can be involved and stuff like that to maximize. I mean, I'm not advocating anything, I'm just, I mean, what I, what I'm here for to get this new landfill going, absolutely make her son have a great life for a long time.
Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
On the application, I know all the concerns Jonathan had there was the yard debris checked on the thing. You know, he was kind of, you know, he talked about like maybe, you know, the demolition part, you know, it would be okay, but he was concerned about the, so is there any way you can explain?
Yeah, absolutely. That is a huge misconception. Within, if you see that red line and you see that green line there, right, those boundaries. The state of Tennessee's T-DAC's regulations for a landfill prohibits any type of open burning inside the perimeter of that footprint. You cannot burn in a landfill that is licensed and permitted by the state of Tennessee. So, it does not lead to, it does not, it is a landfill for the purpose of it being a landfill. You can go out there, you can grind it, and you can do all that stuff, but you cannot burn. If you can look at the potential safety things, if somebody's not doing what they're doing, thinking, they got yard waste over here, it tracks over there, the wind gets it, and the whole thing goes up, you've got a huge disaster. It is against the law to burn in the footprint of a landfill.
Right. Out of the 160 acres, they're only going to make about 26 acres of that be demolition landfill.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the reason for that, let me explain the reasons for that, is because we do have some blue line streams, we have property boundaries, we have, all of that stuff has setbacks in which you cannot do anything, just like building a house. You can only be so far away from the front of the street, you've got to be so far away from the back and the sides. Same thing with the landfill, but much greater setbacks. That's, that's what shrinks this up. The other thing is the geologic formation on it, it limits where you can start digging and getting down into it. So, you basically create a bowl, and then you kind of pyramid it back up. So, but with that being said, because if you permit this, and this is where it helps you out a lot, once you permit this, and that property right there is in there, you can't do anything other than put a landfill on that. And like I said earlier, you cannot open burn. Just because they got 160 acres doesn't mean they can take one five-acre spot over to the right side of it and burn. The difference in what they're looking at, in the spot they're looking at, is outside the area of the permits that they, that T-DAC has for landfills. It is out, you have, right now, you've got three landfills out there. You've got the old Superfund, Murray Site, which the president might make calls if we decided to make some burning over there. You have an old landfill that's to the southeast of it, that's been closed for about 20 years. It's about when I got involved, and then you have the existing, current landfill that's open. That area, that property, cannot burn on that stuff. The spot that they're looking at is outside of those limits. That's the only reason.
Could I come up?
Absolutely.
I was going to try to get a question. This is the 160 acres that has just been bought.
That is correct.
And these are the two sites?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, I've been informed by T-DAC that there's sites that are actually on the 160 acres, that they can burn if they do, if they get the appropriate permits. Is that correct?
That is incorrect. If they get a permit from the state of Tennessee, the T-DAC, for the Class 3.4 landfill, you cannot burn on it, no matter where it is.
Not burn on it, burn beside it, just as they're doing, this is the current demo field.
Right.
And I'd say approximately 200 yards from it towards our house is where they're actually digging the hole.
So, no...
Does that sound correct?
No, that's incorrect. So, if you look here on the, on the green space right here, you see that little bare ground that sits to the southeast of it, right there? Everybody see that? That's the, that's where they're digging the hole for, for the burn. Your house sits over here, right? So, that, I think it's somewhere, don't quote me on it, but I think it's, it's quite a ways. It's not 400 yards. It's a lot further, right?
The first one that they built was...
The first one was incorrect, and then they kind of got, they were told, "No, you can't do that." But again, now, I'm, I mean, there's some others that can speak here. I'm just kind of giving you some technical knowledge on the burn permit. I'm not involved with that.
The first one, if I might speak, was back, and I guess he didn't want it, so he came back and... Let's find a further place back, in excess of 100 miles. Yeah, we moved it way back, and then he didn't accept that. But you said, you've got to give us an impression, you would, John.
Sure. Do what now?
Give us an impression, you would accept it if we moved it further back.
You know, we were going through a lot then, and I may have said that, maybe.
But the thing I want to make sure on is, if it's permitted for a landfill, that includes the property around it, the only thing you can do on that landfill is put a landfill, and if you need to bar some soil from one of the other areas to put as cover on that landfill, you can do that. But when it's all said and done, like this, this is just like the existing landfill of Murray. You can't do squat on it. It's just like the landfill to the south that's closest to your house. Can't do nothing. Only thing you can do is repair it if we get an outbreak. The same thing with the Class 3.4 landfill that we've got currently, when it's closed, can't do nothing.
Do you have any attorney's paper?
Yeah, sure.
Do you have any attorney?
Yes, sir.
So, I understand, one, is this, is this part of the Jackson law?
The Jackson law, and let me go back to it, which is the real reason here. The Jackson law is to make sure that, so, a long time ago, somebody tried to put a landfill...
It started in Lawrence County, and so some of you guys...
That's absolutely right. They tried to put a landfill in underneath everybody's noses and not let anybody know, and so they passed the Jackson law. Bledsoe and Lewis got on board with that. That happened in, I think it was passed in 2008. And the way that it kind of works is, if the property is somewhere and we want to do it as a landfill, that all the entities, meaning the county and the city, must approve that, "Hey, we're going to go for the application to get a permit." T-DAC could still say no, but it's just getting that process. Like I said, T-DAC will not look at that hydro report, which is sitting on their desk, until we have a resolution. So, the longer we wait, the longer you're going to have to burn. If you don't do this, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not, the landfill is, we've been working on this thing for a long time, because getting the property from Murray took a long time. Yes, sir.
I understand your explanation about the extension of the landfill that we're doing tonight, it has to be approved by all the entities. In a case like what we're talking about, the burn location, does that have to be approved by the entities like the county and the city? Or how does...
I don't know. It's my understanding that the city has a permit from the Division of Forestry and Agriculture.
But none of the elected boards have an upper deck vote?
If you, well, I mean, if you kind of get in, I mean, if the city says, "No, we don't want to go that way," I guess so, but, I mean...
But the law doesn't require?
Not to my knowledge. I'm not a lawyer, I'm an engineer.
And you work for a private company, right?
Yes.
So, you can't actually speak to what the city of Lawrenceburg will do after you do your job with the construction of the site?
No, I can say to the fact, and I've said this once before, if this gets permitted as a landfill, it limits what you can do with it. That is in the law. The permit holds that. So, what, you know, if, if they had this dug out, and they put all that, all that material in the back corner of that thing, of this landfill, and say, "Oh, you know what, we want to burn it." No. State jumps in and says, "No, you cannot."
So, these two red spots here, that's where they're going to construct the demo field, correct?
The new one, yes.
Okay. And I take it this current demo field probably has the same permits, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And this spot right here is where Mr. Hyde is building the current burn pit, correct?
That's correct.
So, that's probably, best I can tell, I've got pictures on my phone, it's about 100 yards, maybe, so they can actually burn on the land, on the landfill land, but not on the demo field.
That's, that's not part of the landfill land. That's what needs to be clear. Where they're looking to put this burn pit is just city property. It is not permitted under a landfill permit.
Correct. But they can burn there, just as they could do in these two red spots, they could burn outside of it, within the...
Negative. No. That's, let me make this really clear, and he's got a really good picture here, and this is actually one of my, my fig- And he's got a really good picture here, and this is actually one of my, my figures. Here's the existing landfill. Everybody see that? Where they're looking to put that burn pit is on the other side of that property line. As I just stated, if it's inside the property line, and it's permitted as a landfill, you cannot burn in it. So, you see the two red spots up here, these are old. If they wanted to burn, all the way up here on this little flag of this, cannot do it. Cannot do it.
Why couldn't they, because they're out of the red?
They're on the property. The property incl, the property line is this big black line right here, it goes around it. The property line, and if you look at this, this 11 acres, it's part of the original 181 acres that we got from Murray. Murray was in some tax problems, we got that property, we had nowhere to go, we pushed all this stuff to other counties. I think we spent 480 some thousand dollars moving trash for nine months. And I don't want money to be a factor, especially don't, because I do feel for you, I really do. But what I want to make sure is that where they got this burn pit, it's not on the landfill property. It is on city property that is outside of the permitted landfill. And the same thing would apply here. You cannot burn, once this is permitted, this whole entire 181 acres cannot be burned on.
Well, I think this actually brings up a good point. You know, I'm a concerned person that lives in this county. He's a concerned person that works for a private company, not the state, who solely he's hired for by the city of Lawrenceburg, who looks out for their interest only, not mine, not the city's.
No, I'm a professional engineer in the state of Tennessee. My creed states that I look out for the public. I look out for the well-being of all people. That is my creed, just like a lawyer would have it, just like any of you elected officials, I have the same thing. I'm a licensed engineer.
Do you work for a private company?
I do work for a license. I do work for a private company, my company.
I'd like to hear from the property owner, Mr. Schaefer, who is also the manager of the city of Lawrenceburg. If I'm not mistaken, I believe he's an attorney too, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
I'd like, I'd like to hear him put his two cents worth in, since he owns the property.
Mr. Schaefer? Any other questions?
I can add a little bit to what Garland said. Again, I think, you know, we've almost beat a dead horse to death here. We have the waste, we have to dispose of it. There's not any other options. I mean, we, we cannot put it in the existing landfill. With the size landfill that we're creating, we should be able to put it in there and let nature take its course without having to do any additional burning in the future. Until that point, we have to dispose of the wood waste. There's, there's simply no other way around it. We have no other property where we can do this. We can't take the, I've asked Garland, he might, can, can go a little further on this. We can't take the wood somewhere else, down into the south part of the county, on a big farm and burn it. We, we can't do that. So, it has, we, we have no other options. At least, that's my understanding of it, and I wished I could add more, I wished I could give you a legal theory, but there's not. It's just simply, we've got wood waste that has to be disposed of.
So, wood waste has to be disposed of on a government property, or what's the law?
The, the city owns the debris at this point. Now that the debris is on their property, they own the debris, so they must take care of it. And so, with that being said, and I'm sorry, with that being said, you, you can't, like you said, take it back to a farm and just burn it there that's in a, in another spot. You have to take care of it. Because when the city took care, when they took it from whoever they took it from, they took the responsibility to do it. Just like what you guys would do with your job, somebody asks you to do your job, you do that. It's their responsibility to take care of the waste in a proper way. Is there options? Possibly, but, I mean, like I said, I haven't been involved on the, on the burn permit. And one other thing I just want to state, and I know this might come up, and I know it has come up. Can we just take the debris and put it over on the landfill until the landfill's permitted, and then we can dispose of it? And the state doesn't work that way. Can't stockpile anything until it's actually permitted. So, that's why the essence is to get a permit. Once we're permitted, rock and roll. No problems.
Mr. Benfield, then, Mr. Yelich.
We had a contract, I know, at one time with Mr. French to grind what's up here at this landfill. Our, where did that out there come from? It's nothing, it's come from up here and been took out there, isn't it?
I'll let Gary Wayne have it.
So, this is debris that's been there for, for years.
You're talking about the wood waste that were discussed at the burn? That's actually sitting at the, at the old bale field. If you go, if you go, if you go to the landfill, if you go to the bale field where Gary Wayne's office is, and you drive in, you see it all right there to your left as you come in. That's the material in question.
Well, see, at one time, Mr. French was grinding that for nothing.
That's right.
All right, then he decided, what, $6 a ton? I, they put it on the bid process, I remember I was on the purchasing committee, but thinking $6 a ton would.
He finished it ten, I believe.
Oh, he raised it. Well, is he still out of the tub grinding?
He is out of the business. Sold his equipment, he just said, my understanding, he just ready to go it out.
You know why, so there is no need for paper products, you know, we sold that here.
I know.
And this whole thing.
They're demo, demoing the building down there.
We had a very deal there for a while, and now we don't have anything.
What I'm thinking, you know, Mr. French, or maybe get somebody else, you said it could be ground. And put in ditches or whatever laying it out there. Am I right?
You, you do put it as cover, yes.
But what he's saying, they ain't no alternative, it's gonna be burned.
No, 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 no.
Ain't that what you just said?
Let's back it up too, because it's only, it's, they only have so much space, all right, so we, we only have so much space to store it. And TDEC's got rules on how much you can store, how high. You can't make just a big old trash pile and let it be there, right? And they're almost full. Problem is, and there's some waste out there, it's just a, an X amount of waste, just to buy that little amount of time, this is my understanding, to get through the permit process. Once we're through the permit process, no burning, all goes to landfill.
What type of guarantees can we have that there will never be burning there?
The state of Tennessee's law.
Okay.
Now.
Can we guarantee that the land around the 26 or so acres that, that, that you deem to be fit for a demo field will never be sold, that it'll always be?
Yeah, so, so, once this 160 acres, that boundary you got on that piece of paper right there, once that is permitted as a landfill, can never be done anything else to it. You can't burn, you can't sell it off, because the permit includes all 160 acres. Does that make sense?
Well, I think we need clarification from TDEC. Because I feel like I've been told different.
I would, I would highly recommend for you call James Clark or Dennis Erickson in Columbia office and maybe tell you the same thing.
Well, I don't, I don't think the commission needs to be misguided.
And that's why I'm here to help answer questions.
Sure. On behalf of the city?
Uh, no, actually, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna lie to you. I mean, like I said, I'm a licensed engineer. I get in trouble if I lie to you, I'm just telling, I have the rules right here, if you want to see the solid waste rules, but that's the rules. It specifically says you cannot open burn, and that property is a landfill.
Mr. Yelich?
I just want to make this very clear. Tonight, we're here on the resolution, on the, on the landfill, on the new, on the new park. We're not, we're not here for the open burn.
That is correct.
So, it is here today saying, and, and I hope Jonathan can, can, that, that there's no way there can ever be an open burn on this new site that we're about to vote on, for y'all to apply.
Once the permit is issued by the state of Tennessee, that is a Class 3.4 landfill.
That's absolutely correct.
It cannot, we cannot burn it, it will be demolition period.
That is correct. That is why it's called a landfill.
And that would be the entire 160 acres?
That's the entire 160 acres. The only thing you can do on that property is, once these landfills are done, is if you wanted to grab some soil, say you had some stockpile soil that's leftover, you can use that. You can't do anything else, you can't build a house on it, you can't put a business on it, you can't put a park on it. It is, it is basically property that's gonna stay the way it is until they come up with something in the future that they can reclaim or whatever.
That is contrary to what Caleb, who works for TDEC, has told me. He had a map, and he showed me the two spots that they're gonna build the demo field. And he said, there's a spot right here that they could possibly burn, because it's not within the permanent spot. The, the, the spot that, that's red, that's actually considered the per, the, the spot that, that they're gonna put the waste.
Commissioner Eaton? How about you, Ed?
County attorney, one question. If it's city-owned property, can the county really dictate what goes on their property?
Well, they have to comply with the Jackson Law. As I understand it, to approve the landfill has nothing to do with burn permit. To approve the landfill gets rid of burning. So, in order for the city to move forward, and for us to have a place to put our demo land, demo waste, the city probably should be thanked in some respect.
My other question is, is if they have the burn permit through the state of Tennessee, can we tell them, no, no burning?
I'm not aware, I don't think the county has any dollars in interest.
Right now, there isn't a permit. Anybody, you, you know, anybody burned anything right now?
In the, in the May 15th, October 15th, his next door neighbor can go burn right beside his house and cannot be. That's my understanding.
Yeah.
So, the only turn, only permit you have to have is between October 15th and the next May.
Any more comments on this subject?
Tonight, we'll move on to our regular agenda. And the first item will be the consideration of the bi-monthly financial report fiscal agent. Would, uh?
Second.
Well, there's not one of them, but.
So, we don't need either one of them?
I don't think you got a report.
Okay. Scratch those two, we don't have to consider.
Change our schools.
We'll move on to the report of the resolution committee.
We did a good job.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Eaton, a second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, consider the election of nominees.
Move it up. Second.
A motion by Commissioner Gillespie, second by Commissioner Yocum. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to our resolution section. Resolution number one is a resolution approving the minutes of the May 23, 2017 regular session meeting.
Move it up. Second.
A motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Gillespie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution number two is a resolution approving minutes of the June 29, 2017 special session.
Move to the top. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Harris, a second by Mr. Gillespie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number three is a resolution to adopt Private Acts Chapter Number 13 enacted by the Tennessee General Assembly to authorize Lawrence County to create the position of clerk of the grand jury.
Move it up. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Spearman, second by Commissioner Gillespie. Any discussion on this item? Charlie, do we need a roll call?
Uh, yes, please.
Roll call, Mr. Clark.
Yocum?
Aye.
Whiskey?
Aye.
Story?
Yes.
Spearman?
Yes.
Nicoso? Marlin?
Aye.
Keaton?
Jackson?
Aye.
Hood?
Aye.
Harris?
Yes.
Whiskey?
Aye.
Frank?
Keaton?
Yes.
Fifty?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Jeffery Ronnie?
Aye.
Kenneth Delano?
Yes.
Anybody wish to change the votes? Forward, close, 15, 40, 30?
Moving on to resolution number four. It's a resolution to delay the effective date of the $25 litigation tax imposed by resolution number 2017-62913 adopted by the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners on June 29, 2017. Commissioner Harris?
Commissioner Jackson?
Well, let's get it on the floor first.
Okay, all right.
Do I hear a motion?
Move it up. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gillespie, second by Commissioner Brewer, Commissioner Harris.
Yes, Judge McGuire is here tonight, and I think if you'll let her spend a few minutes, she can explain this resolution to us.
Okay. Judge McGuire?
I think I picked a bad day to be here. Can I put this on? You know, a lot of tension and everything. Okay, but seriously, thank y'all very much, the commission and the county executive for finally addressing the issue of courthouse security. That's not about me, it's not about the other judges, it's not about the DAs, it's not about the lawyers, it's about everybody. Now, Coffey County just had a shooting. A deputy got shot by someone that they were escorting in and out of the courtroom. They got the gun and they shot him. It's about all of us being safe down there at that courthouse. And I do appreciate that finally it's been addressed. When it comes to the money, I was a little bit surprised when I read in the paper about this $25 litigation fee. And then I talked to Ms. Riddle, and she said, yes, it would be added on to like, she thought, the speeding tickets, and it would be added on to maybe even the, the seatbelt tickets and whatever. So, I went over and I talked to the resolution or agenda committee or whatever it was, and there wasn't very many people there that day, but I was just there to talk, and Mr. Marlin brought up something. He said, well, you know, you see all these people in court all the time, and I said, no, Mr. Marlin, I do not. I do not see most of these people in the court all the time. I see a lot of good people. I see a lot of people also that have a lot of problems, and I do see them often. But the majority of people that I see are very good people. You come with, to see me on Traffic Friday, and I've got all these speeders that's got tickets and whatever, citations. But these are the people that work. They go to work. I mean, we're talking about nurses, teachers, people that go to work every day. And they're just like me and you, or at least like they're might like me. Can anybody here say that they've never gone too fast over the speed limit? Are y'all all really law-abiding? We all, at one time or the other, you know, and I hear all kind of reasons, well, my child was sick, or for some reason I was late for work and whatever. Now, we're not talking about people doing 100 miles an hour in a 30 mile zone, we're talking about a few miles over, but they get a citation. I don't have a problem with the law enforcement giving them a citation to y'all, because they are not going by the law. And they've got a job to do. But what we've done for years is that we do the 132.50, you get a technical minimum, we give you time to pay it, and it doesn't go on your record. It's a lot easier than trying to have them go to driving school, and then they gotta come back, and they gotta bring their certificate. And it would, Debbie Riddle will kill me if I did all of that, because it's so much work, paperwork. We just do 132.50, these people pay it. I don't think they should have a free ride. I think they should be reminded that you are, and we all are, abide by the law. But I think we need to give them a fair ride, 132.50 can't hurt a lot of people. But you add on another $25, then you got all other things, like, you know, I see a lot of good people. People, if you go over there to probate your parents' will, it's another $25. If you see the people that I see, they've rented, they're, let's say, their rental property out. The renter won't pay rent, what have they gotta do? They gotta take a warrant to get them out of the property. So, they gotta put up another $25, which they probably won't get back. The point is, I see a lot of good people. And I just went over to talk, like I said, to find out, is there some way that they don't have to at least apply it to speeding and maybe traffic and whatever? Because we've done this for 13 years, we've kept it low here. I promise you, the officers are real happy with it, most people leave court happy. But you're starting adding on money, and you're talking about their daycare money, you're talking about people's... You know, I see a lot of good people. These are not criminals, these are not bad people, that's all I want to say. Y'all gotta do what you gotta do, but I sure do hate to see it particularly applied to speeding. Now, another reason that I think perhaps it might should be delayed, we're still trying to figure out what, when it kicks in and when it kicks in on, do you have all those answers, Ms. Riddle? Does you think it was gonna apply to seatbelt, for example?
I don't think it applies to seatbelt.
I don't think it does either. But you can see, we, just how it works and whatever. But obviously, you can see, those people that I see, I think I'm supposed to help them if I can. So, I'm here to say, hey, I put in my two bits, they are good people, they're not criminals, I promise you. They're just people like, ordinary like me, that go to work, and probably a lot better than I am in the long run. than I am in the long run." And I thank you for listening. But again, remember, I also surely appreciate your addressing the issue of courtroom security. I think it is time, and I do appreciate that effort. So I'm not, I don't wanna be kicking any dust in anybody's face or doing anything about it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jerry.
I think we have some commissioners also that had some questions about how, um, the twenty-five dollars, how it is funded, what accounts it goes through, and things like that. And so I'd like to ask Teresa Purcell if she would... Uh, I think everybody got one.
Did everybody get a, uh...
Did everybody get a sheet that looks like this?
I didn't get one.
Okay.
Y'all could pass this around to everybody.
Portion, the top portion of this spreadsheet actually covers the courtroom security expense budget.
Ms. Purcell, please.
It actually covers the courtroom security expense budget, which you can see that over the last few years that, you know, we've tried, um, the sheriff has actually worked with us on trying to reclassify, um, the deputies that he's moved over, uh, from his budget into the courtroom security. So we tried this year, when we did the budget, tried to get everybody moved over where he wouldn't having to absorb that within his budget. So, um, you can see that that is one-fifty-five, two-thirty-four. That's the total two thousand eighteen, uh, projected budget. The bottom portion is the revenue generated from litigation tax by fund. There's three different funds that litigation tax goes into. The first fund is the general fund. Of course, you've got, you've got two different accounts. The first account is a general litigation tax, and it's twenty-eight-fifty per case, and it's not earmarked for anything specific, um, so it's used for general use. That generates about a hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. Um, the next one is a litigation tax that is eighteen dollars, you know, per case, and that's to offset the cost of the judge's salary. That's, um, generates about sixty-one thousand, three ninety-four a year.
Is that for all judges or just general sessions?
I think that's the general sessions. Fund one-twelve is, um, the courthouse, and sorry for the, the spelling there, but courthouse and jail maintenance fund. Uh, again, there's two different litigation taxes that actually, uh, were, uh, collected in that fund. Uh, there's a special purpose, um, litigation tax. It's four dollars per case, and that goes, um, for jail and courthouse maintenance. That generates about sixteen thousand, seven fifty. And then there's a two-dollar, uh, courtroom security fee that's collected in circuit, general sessions, and chancery, and that's for continuance, uh, only if the, you know, the defense wants to continue a case. Does not count, um, on the first appearance. That's only fifteen hundred a year. And then the last fund is fund one-fifty-one. Uh, that's the debt service fund. That generates about a hundred and nine thousand, and that's twenty-five dollars per case for, uh, debt service. That's to be used for the building fund for the jail and the courthouse. So really, the only one that's not for a specific purpose is what goes into the general fund, the twenty-eight-fifty. And that generates about one-twenty-three, four. Really, the twenty-five dollars that you're looking at now would probably generate right at a hundred and ten thousand if you increased it.
So you'd still be about forty-five thousand dollars short?
Right.
That was the question during the budget process of how much would it, the twenty-five, would it be too excessive? Would it be too much? Would it go over what the actual courtroom security budget is? But by the projections that she ran, uh, it appears that it'd still be about forty thousand dollars short, which would mean we would still have some money that would have to be put in that, but it would be offset somewhat. Mr. Chairman, please.
I had the same concerns that you did, uh, in the budget process this. And, but if you, if you really, if you really look at her resolution, uh, delaying it for one month, it will go in effect September one anyway. Now we kinda got the numbers to show what it's, you know, what it's going to, uh, going to generate. So, you know, I, you know, I can't see delaying a month when it's gonna go in effect September one because that there is what the resolution says. So I mean, I mean, why would we want to delay it for one, for one month?
Mr. Harris.
Uh, I can speak to the delay just a little bit. At the agenda committee meeting, when we were finishing up that day after Judge McGuire spoke, um, we talked about the fact that we might not need the whole twenty-five dollars, that we could look, um, into it and see maybe if ten dollars would be enough, or if fifteen dollars would be enough. So the thirty days would buy us some time in order to look deeper into this and make sure that, um, the twenty-five dollars was an adequate number.
Well, I mean, I can understand that, but now we kinda got the numbers here before us that it's gonna generate a hundred and nine, which that's not, that's, that's not equivalent of what it would cost. Now, you know, if the commission feels like, you know, that we should do a lower number and, 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 you know, not, you know, generate that much, that there's one thing. I mean, I, it's just, I mean, which I had the same concerns about, about the traffic tickets and, 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 you know, I mean, I took, brought that up during the budget committee, you know, and, but, uh, but since we have the numbers, you know, if this is gonna go in effect September one, well, if we want to have a lower number or amend it to exempt, uh, traffic tickets or something like that, I would think maybe that we should, you know, amend the budget to do so, you know, instead of just, instead of just delaying it a month. If it's gonna go in effect September one, what, you know, why not, why not? Because it's been passed to go in effect August one. Right?
Yes.
So, you know, if we're not gonna change anything, you know, I really don't know what the delay would really, would really mean.
And that thirty days would give us time to, for the budget committee to go that route, if that's the route that the commission would like to go.
Mr. Delano, please.
I've got a question. Table list, or we can do some further study on?
We have a motion to lay this aside on the table.
And I, my question was, what do we have to do to do away with the whole thing? I mean, the whole resolution that we passed before it, I'll just forget it.
Well, let, let, let's maintain order here. We have a motion to, to table this.
I second the motion to table.
We have a motion and a second to table the proposal.
I have a question.
Okay, sorry. You're first.
Judge McGuire, I might ask you, and I know your job is hard enough, but, um, could you waive the fee?
No.
Well, you know, like I said, I believe in giving everybody a fair chance, not a free ride.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, what I do, what I, what I had to go through, and this is one of the reasons I wanted to talk to, to try to talk to everybody. Okay, I can send them to driving school, and that's a hundred dollars. The work attendant to that, it just doubles the work for the clerk of the court because we'd have to reset these cases, and they gotta go to driving school. But that's the cheapest way out. Now, my conscience tells me I'm gonna have to offer that, that to them, and everybody's gonna go to driving school, so you're not gonna get any money. Now, would you think that I was awful, and I was just doing that to retaliate? Surely y'all know me better than that. But I have to do right for these people. I have to offer them the cheapest way out because, like I said, these are working decent, good people that are trying to pay their bills. So if it's cheaper to go to driving school, then everybody's probably gonna go to driving school. So that deprives the county and the state of the money that they're normally getting out of that one-thirty-two-fifty, which has been a good way to handle the cases. So, you know, I, I, I've put it out on the table today. I mean, I'm gonna have to say, "I would not do that just for the heck of it." But I've got to take care of my people. These are good people. That's, I think, part of my job. I try, you know, they leave happy with one-thirty-two-fifty. I give them time to pay it, it doesn't go on their record. But we still do not deprive the county and the state of what money that they can collect, and all of this is under the statute. So far, I've had no problem with the state doing that, giving them the technical minimum. It's worked out well. But I just can't say, "Well, you gotta do the one-fifty-seven-fifty. If you can get out for a hundred dollars, does that make sense?" So I'd rather not do that. I'd rather see that, that everybody gets their money. But I, I just can't get up and, and, and not tell them that, that you can go to driving school for a hundred bucks.
Yes, ma'am.
Do y'all understand that? I mean, I wouldn't do that to y'all. Y'all understand that, so...
Yes, ma'am.
Now, if you would just find it in your heart somehow the other to say that I'm not right, and y'all don't care if I waive it, then I'll just waive it on all the speeding. And again, if I had some kind of, you know, your grace to do that, and if it's on everybody else, you know, gentlemen, it comes down to one thing. I saw y'all rise to the occasion time after time to do what you got to do. You provided safety for the schoolchildren by having officers out there. Now, we didn't ask the parents that got the children to pay that. Right now, you're asking people who literally go to the courthouse, a lot of them because they don't have any choice, they got to, they got to probate their wills, they got to do whatever. You're asking them to support courtroom security. Somehow the other, I just kinda felt like we were better than that. Do you know what I mean? It's, it's a public service, it's something that we should do, and it's for everybody that comes down there. But now, if I just can waive it on that one-thirty-two-fifty, they'll be happy, I'll be happy, and the troopers will be happy because it makes their life a lot happier. Do you see why? Because when they say one-thirty-two-fifty, they're not mad about maybe the, the citation or anymore. And you know, when I go out to all the breakfasts and the fish fries and everything, what does everybody always talk to me about? Their speeding tickets, or their, their traffic tickets. They're not the criminals, they're not out here stealing, and they're not talking about the warrants. Everybody's talking about that. So we try to keep them happy. Does that make sense? You know, and happy with the system.
Thank you.
Judge, I, I just wanna say something. I, I respect your opinion, and I fully understand where you're coming from, but, uh, just in the last four years, you talked about adding the SROs. We did do that. We added the courtroom security, and we had to raise taxes. So, and that was a large part of why, you know, the additional personnel that we've gained over the last four years, uh, wasn't cheap. So in essence, all of the taxpayers of Lawrence County had to pay for those positions through, through tax dollars.
But, but the thought behind the budget committee's decision to implement this litigation
fee in the full commission was that it's kind of a user fee. You know, if you're using the courthouse facilities and using the resources, you should be the one that should help pay for the security to maintain the building. That was the thought behind it, kinda like the gas tax. If you're using the roads, you should be the one to help pay for it. That was the thought behind it, but I do appreciate your input on it.
Let me, let me make a comment, please.
Mr. Spearman.
Since we've got a something on table before we go to the vote, I agree with the judge of where, I don't see where we need a litigation tax. We've taxed these people in this county enough, and we've got funds that we can come up with that twenty-five dollars, or twenty dollars, or ten ninety-five to pay for courtroom security instead of passing it on to the taxpayers of this county. Now...
I would like to point out it passed unanimously last minute.
Well...
Motion on the floor.
That's true. Also, talking about raising the taxes, one reason, and the main reason we raised taxes last time, of course, I voted against it, but we couldn't get people to pay their nine-one-one, I mean, not nine-one-one, but their emergency, uh, bills or their trash bills. And, and it kinda put us in a bind where we had to come up with the money, and that's why that, that three cents was raised on taxes.
Mr. Harris, then Commissioner Eaton, I think you were, or Commissioner Flipton.
The motion's on, if the motion's on the floor, if we table it, it's gonna go, gonna go into effect August the first. If we table this tonight, am I understanding that correctly?
It'll be status quo as passed last night.
Let me say something about this motion.
Yes, sir.
To table it. If you table that, and I'll, you're only table in this part that goes from now to August the first. It will go in effect August the first.
Right.
Yes, yes.
If we want it, to do away with it, you know, and all this won't do any good whatsoever.
Right, that's right. That's right.
So I want to know what we have to do to deal away with it. That's, that's what he wants, too.
I can answer that question. I withdraw my second on the table.
I withdraw my motion, if we vote to do away with it or keep it.
Somebody can amend the motion, though. I'll amend the resolution to rescind the tax or keep it.
And that will require two-thirds of the vote.
I guess you just have to rescind it. If you both rescind, then that probably require two-thirds of the vote.
It will. Absolutely. It was passed by two-thirds of the vote, so it has to be rescinded by two-thirds.
I've got a question. We've got a resolution here to delay this a month. Let's do that, and let's discuss this and bring this back in a month's time.
Well, if you do that, though, Russ, it's still gonna go in effect September first because we won't meet again until September twenty-second.
But you've got a resolution...
You need to change the amendment to sixty days if you wanna do that, or to the next meeting.
The resolution on there that we're...
Unless you wanna have a special meeting.
Okay, we got, we got two competing thoughts. We have people talking about repealing the entire bill, and we have people talking about delaying it even further than what the original resolution is. Do I hear any motions?
I would like to make a motion.
To?
Amend this resolution to delay it for sixty days and let it go back into committee and bring it back up before the full commission in our next meeting in two months.
I'll second.
Would you change that to October one, the date?
October the first. I'd like to delay this.
I'll second that.
You'll have another meeting in between then.
I'd like to make a motion to do away with it.
We've got a motion on the floor.
Let, let, let's have a word.
Commission as a whole, or, or what?
Commissioner Brewer, would you specify what committee?
Back to the, uh...
Or the entire commission as a, committee as a whole?
Yes.
So the amendment is to delay the effective date of collecting the tax until October one, two thousand seventeen, and refer, uh, as the county executive, to call a meeting of the commission as a whole to discuss this further.
Exactly, just what I was thinking.
Wouldn't that have to go back to the budget, though? Doesn't it need to go back to the budget first?
Budget committee.
Yeah, budget committee.
Only if it's changed.
If you want to...
If you change the amount or whatever.
I mean, we, we're here right now, meeting. We saw the figures. It's one-oh-nine at the full twenty-five dollars. Did, are, is there a majority support of lowering it to a number that'll lower the one-oh-nine? I mean, we can pretty much decide it in discussion right now. Does anybody think it needs to be lowered below twenty-five, which will generate less than the one-oh-nine?
If we lower it, where are we gonna get the money?
Exactly. That, that, we can discuss it right now during discussion, if we want to.
Let's lower it to zero. Where are we gonna get the money? Well, let's look a little deeper.
It's already coming out of the general fund. That's really the only other option.
It's coming out of taxpayer's pocket already. It doesn't matter.
But it's coming out of the general fund?
Right.[1657.63] Right. And if we offset it, you know, and we'll save this additional money, that will go back into the general fund, and we could use it on other projects. That's the other flip side.
Brew, what else does come out of the general fund? I'm sorry.
Well, the majority of your departments, your departmental budgets, your ambulance service, all your administration of justice, of course, the budget office, you know, registered, you know, everybody at the annex, yeah, the majority of it, it's a lot. Majority of your departments come out of the general fund.
Was there a motion and a second?
Yes, I seconded it.
Okay. We've got a motion by Commissioner Brewer and a second by Commissioner Harris to delay for 60 days.
To October 1.
Excuse me, October 1. Is there any discussion? Okay, so if we vote to amend, it will delay it to October 1. If not, we'll go back to the original resolution. Mr. Clerk, roll the roll.
Yocum.
No.
Wisdom.
Yes.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
No.
Nick Sass.
Maudlin.
No.
Keaton.
Jackson.
No.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gillespie.
No.
Frankes.
Eaton.
No.
Clifton.
No.
Brown.
No.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
No.
Benfield Delano.
No.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Doors closed. Five, four, and 10 against, three absent.
Amendment fails. We will now move to the consideration of the original resolution. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Yocum.
No.
Wisdom.
Yes.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nick Sass.
Maudlin.
No.
Keaton.
Jackson.
No.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gillespie.
No.
Frankes.
Eaton.
No.
Clifton.
No.
Brown.
No.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
No.
Benfield Delano.
No.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Doors closed. Four, four, and seven against, three absent.
It will go into effect August 1st unless there's any other action. We'll move on to resolution number five now. Resolution to approve the city of Lawrenceburg to proceed with permitting, design, construction, and subsequent operation of a Class III for construction, demolition landfill. Is there anybody that wants to put this up on the floor?
From what I learned tonight, I'll move to adopt it as long as it shuts down burning.
I'll second it. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, you amended the resolution?
No, the resolution has nothing to do with burning. This is to stop the burning, the way I understand the resolution.
It leads to stopping the burning. It leads to stopping it.
I'd like to ask a question. Mr. Yocum, and I guess maybe it's to our county attorney, Mr. Charlie. At some point, and I don't know if this resolution needs to be amended, to amend this into it, or we need to maybe consider it and under suspension the rules, but at some point, I would love to see where this whole commission votes on determining whether we burn or not.
You don't think we can do that?
Huh?
I mean...
Can't on county property.
But I don't think we can.
They say that we have the authority.
That's your call.
Our county attorney's going to go with...
They're going to be burning on what exists out there right now.
Gary Wayne, Gary Wayne.
So, that's theirs.
Gary Wayne, let's have a word.
Lawrence County's waste is Lawrence County's. It's Lawrence County's decision whether we burn or not.
So, it is, obviously.
You've got permission to use the city demo.
So, at some point, you know, I would love to either bend this into this resolution or suspend the rules.
Mr. Yocum, I think it would be better, we do have one suspension of the rules. You got that Chris on the bond, if approved.
For the constables?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Could you ask when we go to that?
Oh, yes, yes.
Because this resolution needs to go just like it is.
Okay, okay, okay. Any further discussion on resolution number five?
I've got a question.
Roll call, please.
Yocum.
Aye.
Wisdom.
Yes.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nick Sass.
Maudlin.
No.
Keaton.
Jackson.
No.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Frankes.
Eaton. No.
Clifton.
No.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
No.
Benfield Delano.
No.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Doors closed. Four, four, and seven against, three absent.
It will go into effect August 1st unless there's any other action. We'll move on to resolution number five now. Resolution to approve the city of Lawrenceburg to proceed with permitting, design, construction, and subsequent operation of a Class III for construction, demolition landfill. Is there anybody that wants to put this up on the floor?
What I learned tonight, I'll move to adopt it as long as it shuts down burning.
I'll second it. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any further discussion on resolution number five?
I've got a question.
Roll call, please.
Yocum.
Aye.
Wisdom.
Yes.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nick Sass.
Maudlin.
No.
Keaton.
Jackson.
No.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Frankes.
Eaton. No.
Clifton.
No.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
No.
Benfield Delano.
No.
Anybody wish to change their votes?
I do.
No.
Eight, yes, seven, no, three absent.
The motion fails for a lack of a majority. Resolution number six, a resolution requesting State Representative David Byrd to bring this resolution to the Tennessee General Assembly to name the bridge on State Route 242, Interable Road, crossing over Parker Branch, the Franklin Burns Memorial Bridge. Move it up.
Second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Yocum, second by Commissioner Gillespie. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Charlie?
You know, the Burns family's here.
I did not know that, sorry. Mr. Burns' family is here. Would you guys like to say a few words? I know some of these guys here served with Mr. Burns.
Well, I'd just say that certainly he would feel that this is a big honor. He enjoyed county politics, was in county politics, school board member for a number of years, and a commissioner for a number of years. So, he would certainly be honored by this and appreciate you guys taking this into consideration.
Didn't serve with your, I guess, your dad?
Yes.
Always heard good things about him. Appreciate his service to the community and the county. Thanks for being here. As Charlie said, we do have a resolution to consider, and Mr. Yocum's resolution under the suspension of the rules. The first resolution to consider under the suspension is the resolution approving the bond for Constable Virgil Luna, and the other resolution is a resolution to institute a moratorium on wood burning at the proposed burn site until the full county legislative body approves burning at said site.
Make a motion to suspend the rule.
Got a motion and a second to suspend. Roll call, please.
Yocum.
Aye.
Wisdom.
Yes.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nick Sass.
Maudlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Jackson.
Yes.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Aye.
Frankes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Aye.
Benfield Delano.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Doors closed. It's in four and three absent.
Now, move on to the consideration of resolution number seven under suspension. Resolution approving the bond of Constable Virgil Luna.
Move it up.
Second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Eaton, second by Commissioner Spearman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, we'll move on to the next resolution, and that resolution is resolution to institute a moratorium on wood burning at the proposed burn site until the full county legislative body approves burning at said site.
Move it up.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Yes, Mr. Yocum made that motion, and Mr. Gillespie seconded it. Could you read the text of that to kind of explain what this is?
I think most everybody got a copy of this. It says, "Whereas in the recent months, officials with the city of Lawrenceburg and Lawrence County government agreed to create a burn site to dispose wood waste at a location on Rental Drive in Lawrenceburg. Whereas since the decision to form the burn site residence located close to the proposed site have expressed concerns about the proximity of the site in relation to their homes. Whereas in order to give these citizens a fair hearing and to ensure all commissioners have a full understanding of the situation, there needs to be additional time, followed by a vote of the full commission on whether to allow burning at the proposed location. Therefore, it is resolved for the Lawrence County Legislative Body in regular session on this 25th day of July 2017, when the rental of wood burning be instituted at the proposed site until the full county legislative body approves the site for burning."
So, basically, the resolution asks that there be no burning at the proposed site, which it talked about until the full county legislative body gives approval.
I approve.
Is there any discussion?
I mean, I'm for stopping the burning, but you mean do not burn county waste at the site, right?
Yes.
Because it's not our site.
Right, sure.
You're not saying, we're saying do not burn county waste.
Right.
Because the city has waste that goes out there. So, there's going to be burning out there, most likely.
Yes, yes.
Only what we can control.
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Question has been called for. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Yocum.
Aye.
Wisdom.
Yes.
Story.
Aye.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nick Sass.
Maudlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Aye.
Frankes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Aye.
Benfield Delano.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their vote?
I would, yes.
15, yes, and three absent.
Motion passes with unanimous support. That was the end of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I've got something I want to say.
Go ahead, Mr. Clifford.